At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. We want to welcome everyone to the McDowell County Board of Commissioners' monthly meeting. And I want to read a statement. Our chairman has been out, sick, and I want to read a statement about him tonight before we begin the meeting. And this is from Chairman Tony Brown. "I regret I am unable to attend tonight's board meeting. As some of you are aware, I contracted COVID-19 several weeks ago from a family member. This was unrelated to any functions or meetings as my role of county commissioner. The virus progressed to pneumonia and forced me to be admitted to the hospital. I am currently at home on the road to a speedy recovery." Thank you to everyone for your thoughts and prayers, Chairman Tony Brown. And we do want to say, from our board perspective and staff perspective, we look forward to having Chairman Brown back with us and keep praying for him. He's doing very good, though, and he's in good spirits, and he's excited to get back and start working for the people of McDowell County. Okay, with that being said, I would like to ask everyone, please stand. We always begin our meeting with a prayer and a pledge. And at this time, I'll ask Ms. Allison, listen to the prayer.
Dear God, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight and ask you just to lead, guide, and direct in every decision that we have to make to better the county of McDowell, for the people and for the businesses of McDowell County. I just ask you for that knowledge and that direction. Ask you to be with us and be with Chairman Tony Brown as he continues to recover and just be with us tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
And, boys, Commissioner Ellis, listen, pledge. Just flag.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much. You may be seated. At this time, commissioners, we have the approval of our minutes. We have the January 11th regular session, the January 11 close session, and our January 25th regular session. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion that we approve all of them as they are.
Say it.
Okay, motion, stake, and discussion. All in favor, say aye. And opposed, like aye. Okay, we can move to our next item. This is the approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any additions or deletions by staff and/or commissioners? There being no one's pleasure of the board to concerning adopting our agenda.
Set this, uh, front.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. And opposed, like aye. Okay, that's good. Our first item on our appointment schedule, we have Mr. William Keller with us tonight, and he's here to give us a COVID-19 update. And, Ms. Keller, on behalf of the board, we appreciate sincerely all the work that you have done. You and your crew and partners have done an outstanding job, and it could not have been managed any better. So we stand, we do 100% towards yours, sir.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Hope you're doing well. Today's day 330 of the EOC activation for COVID-19. Our numbers as of noon today, 37,817 tests have been conducted since March 16. 4,410 have returned positive since the start of the pandemic. 33,293 negatives, and we have 114 tests that are pending this afternoon. The GAO's 14-day positivity rate is currently 17.8%. This is a decrease. We have been on the decline over the past several weeks with a very positive trend in our numbers with most of our metrics heading in a downward direction. And we're very pleased with a cautiously optimistic that we can maintain this downward trend. There are some bumps in the road as we've seen all along through this pandemic, one being the Super Bowl yesterday. Hopefully, we don't see a small bump from that in our positivity rate. But we do have a large gap this time for our next holiday, which we know is Easter. So hopefully, we'll be able to push this positivity rate even further in a downward direction prior to the approach of the holiday. Our seven-day roll-in average is looking really good. That's the number of new cases on average every seven days. We're at our lowest point that we've been since the first week of December. Same thing with number of active cases at weeks in. Everything is moving in the right direction with regards to our positivity rate. Hospitalization rate stands at 5.7%, and I've said after each of these holidays, what we know is the first sign of a surge is the number of new cases takes off on us, followed by hospitalizations. That's closely tied to your infection rate for that 50 years of age and older. And then sadly, your death rate or your deaths from COVID are a lagging indicator. Last week was the highest number of deaths we've reported in a single week with a total of eight deaths. We're at a total of 69 during the pandemic, but we know that that is a lagging indicator. And hopefully, we're going to see that trend downward in the next 14 days. Vaccine update, as of yesterday afternoon, we had administered 5,621 doses in McDowell County. 4,890 were first doses of the Moderna vaccine. 731 citizens in McDowell have received their second dose. That does not include the numbers from today's clinic that was conducted at Grace. Once again, we're vaccinating all week, including eight hours this coming Saturday at Grace. Couple changes since the last time I've been here with regards to how we are booking appointments. We're currently not booking any appointments due to the allocation that was cut for McDowell along with the number of other rural counties with that reallocation schedule going out. That put us in a real jam for the appointments that had already been booked out into the middle of February. So we stopped booking appointments for vaccines and started waitlisting individuals in the county. We currently have a little over 700 McDowell County citizens on the waiting list for Group 1 and Group 2, which is our healthcare providers and senior citizens 65 years of age and older. I hope that we're able to clear that backlog quite significantly within the next 14 days and start working towards Group 3, which we know is our central line workters, including our educators, transit, and others that are in Group 3. We requested from the state stability in the forecast moving forward of vaccine distribution. We were literally getting 24-hour notice of this is the number of vaccines you're going to receive for the next week. And it wasn't to a point that we could adequately forecast what we're receiving after the seven-day mark. They've now put us on a 21-day forecast, which is providing some additional stability. The last several weeks, our base allocation has been 400 doses for the entire county. We have been one of 25 counties that has received additional doses the last couple of weeks. But once again, we've used that to keep from canceling appointments for citizens who are already booked within the system. And I'm proud that we have been able to make everything. It's like putting a puzzle together, but we have not had to cancel any appointments at this time. Some of you may have seen the map from CDC about a week ago that ranked McDowell as the third top county in North Carolina for distributed vaccines to the adult population based upon 10,000 calculation for adults. Our goal is to maintain that and continue rolling out these vaccines. I think it's important to know, we do not have any vaccines sitting on the shelf. Once they come in, they're out within seven days, and we're ready for the reload of the allocation. Talked about our plan just a second for the vaccine clinic. The plan was written for 1,000 to 1,500 cars per day at Grace. We wrote this plan using the whole community approach that's been embraced by FEMA for many years. That pulls together volunteers from all different sectors of the community, including faith-based, all of the county organizations, the partner entities here in the county, to come together with one written plan to effectively roll out these vaccines as quickly as possible. That plan is ready to be fully implemented once we receive the supply. If we receive 1,000 in a week, we're going to push out 1,000. And we can push out up to 6,000 doses in a week's time if we were to receive that and speed along this process. Plan was developed to be fast, safe, and efficient. We've received substantial feedback from the citizens of how safe they feel coming through, how efficient they think the process is. And our goal is no waiting. We don't want people having to get out of the cars. We don't want to be a super-spreeder event. And we don't want long lines and people waiting for hours. This, a week ago, we revamped the call center platform. Our average wait time with the call center last week was a minute and 55 seconds. So we're very pleased with that. That's something that we're monitoring daily to ensure we've got a good customer experience. Next up, after we moved from Group 1 and 2, will be Group 3. But the state does trigger that move to the next group, and our staff is working diligently behind the scenes, prepared for that move to Group 3. And with that, that's an overview of our COVID operations and happy to answer any questions you may have.
All I gotta say is that's phenomenal, William, what you're doing. If you had the doses, you've got the plan for 6,000, and you could get them out like that. I mean, hats off to, you know, all the partners, Grace, for the use of their facilities and the parking. And it's just phenomenal what you're doing, William, and I really appreciate it, and other board members do. And I'll give y'all a chance to make comments. Ren, go ahead.
I'm just very, very pleased and proud that you all did. Thank you.
We appreciate that. It's taken, it's taken a whole village to pull this off, and we've got a long ways to go. But I feel really comfortable where we're at, and we've gotten the infrastructure ready to deploy once we receive additional vaccines.
Pat, go ahead.
The vaccine distribution, on cutting it back to 400 a week, is that through the governor's instruction, and it's going to a higher populous area?
Yeah, so several weeks ago, the, North Carolina had a large amount of doses that needed to get out quickly. And that, those doses were reallocated from rural areas and pushed into the urban, large vaccination sites. We pushed back very hard and made it very clear, we have a plan. Our plan meets FEMA's Type 3 vaccination site designation. And if they want to push out vaccines quickly, they need to work with counties that have the existing capacity and not reinvent the wheel here.
Correct. And on that right there, I want to thank you for, for that. I do, there have been a few people grinding a little bit about the wait time. And it's very encouraging to hear about the wait times getting down to where it is. And then to the county getting kind of down to 400, and that's, that's one thing that I just want to say, thank you again. It is leadership, and I do think that a big thank you to you. I mean, it's a, it's a good deal.
I appreciate that. We're well aware that when we first released the call center, we did not anticipate phone calls all the way from the coast of North Carolina back to Knoxville, Tennessee, from Spartanburg, South Carolina. Once people realized that there was a drive-through site early on, and a lot of counties hadn't even started vaccinating 65 and older, that's where we ran into issues for a couple of days. And I'm proud of our team for adjusting. There was substantial wait times. There was people that were being disconnected. And as we always do, if we've got an issue, we're going to tell you we've got one, and we're going to fix it. And they, they maneuvered quickly to try to make it work.
Your team's made us proud.
We appreciate that.
Chris.
I just wanted to say thank you for everything you're doing, your leadership, and your team. It's amazing. And I'm proud to be part of McDowell County and how you guys operate.
We appreciate that. We appreciate the support that we've gotten. Everything that we need, we've got, and we're moving forward quickly. As quickly as we can based upon support.
Okay, William, if there's anything that you need to help in the battle against COVID from our board, let Mr. Wood know, and our board will be very responsive to help meet your needs.
Mr. Wood, along with Ms. Mitchell and the whole entire team, Ms. Bell. I mean, we've got multiple county departments helping us for our daily operation so that we can remain focused on COVID. But with a lot of these folks being out there helping us at the vaccination sites, it's amazing everybody that's come together to make it work.
Thanks so much, Ren.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, let's go ahead and move to our next appointment item. And we have Serena Hinson with us, and this is the 2020 audit presentation. Ms. Hinson, if you don't mind, come forward. Good to have you in the boardroom with us tonight. And, Mr. Wood, anything you need to add before Ms. Hinson begins?
Just briefly, there is the audit presentation, and not reflected on there is the, this year's audit contract that's also in your packet. We'd ask that you approve that afterwards so they can continue to do good work this summer.
Okay, the floor's yours. Good to see you.
Thank you. Good evening. Again, I'm Serena Hinson with Lautermill Church &amp; Company. And we just completed the audit for McDowell County. And I believe everyone has an electronic copy of the audit. Our opinion letter is on page 1 of the audit. And on the second page of that, it tells that what our opinion is, which is basically that the financial statements are fairly presented, which is basically a clean opinion. There's no issues there. And then if you go to page 135, that starts your compliance section, and we have several opinion letters. And those opinion letters are basically on your internal control over your financial reporting and also your federal and state programs where most of your revenue sources, which provides most of your revenue sources of income. And with those opinion letters, there are no material weaknesses. There were no significant deficiencies. It was an unmodified, or in other words, a clean opinion as well. So also during our audit, there were no concerns that came to our attention. If you have any questions on the audit, I'll be more than happy to answer those.
Ms. Hinson, could you go ahead? One thing the board is really focused on, and it's a requirement by the state to maintain a certain fund balance. Did the fund balance increase this year, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, good. By how many percentage points?
Okay, so your overall fund balance went from approximately 11.7 million in the prior year to 13.6 million. So an increase of approximately 1.8 million. That's your total fund balance. And then based on what the local government commissioner, the state treasurer's office requires, is the available fund balance. And your available fund balance went from 6.8 million to 8.8 million. So, and percentage-wise, it went from 15.28% up to 18.69%. And I actually have some highlights. I wasn't planning on going through all of it, and I think you have an electronic copy. And again, I wasn't planning on going through any of that, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. Of course, your general fund is your main operating fund, so that was the one that I was concentrating on. But it does address your other major funds.
Okay, any comments or questions for Ms. Hinson by board members? Actually, anything you need to add, sir?
They do a great job, and, you know, it was a little bit challenging this past year with the pandemic. But staff that interacted with them had a great experience, of course, and thank them for a smooth process.
The motion you need is what?
To approve the audit as presented.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the audit as presented.
Okay, you have a session. Second, discussion. All in favor, say aye. And opposed, like aye. Okay, great. And I do want to recognize Allison Bell, our finance director. She does an outstanding job and has done that and served that capacity for McDowell County and been just a good steward, making sure things are done properly and according to guidelines. And so Allison, we do want to say thank you. Our board does. Every board member appreciates you tremendously. So keep up the good work, and I know that Ms. Hinson enjoyed being able to communicate with you. And I know y'all were so good in getting documents they might need and things to do.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate that Allison has been awesome to work with. And even with the, having to do a lot of the documentation electronically, she made it seamless. And so I really appreciate that.
Okay, all right. Well, wonderful. Good news. We appreciate the work that you did on all of it. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
We do have the contract for this year as well.
What's the pleasure of the board, Serena?
Motion to approve the contract.
Motion to approve, second, by Commissioner Val. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. And opposed, like aye. Okay, all right. Thank you, staff, commissioners. Let's move to the next item. We have Ms. Carol Price with us tonight, and I'll let Carol introduce who's here with her. And she is the director of the TDA. So we know you're busy in a branding session and have good news for the board. And we appreciate the video that you got. They forwarded that video to all the commissioners, and that was good also. So thanks so much. So the floor's yours, Carol. Good to see you.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate the time to come and talk with you all today. The last time we were here, we were actually providing the board with an update of a wayfinding sign project. We were to the point where we were about to talk with some potential manufacturers to get those signs put in the ground, and COVID happened. So we sort of stepped back on that project. And we had also started to talk with a couple of different companies to work with the tourism authority to create a strategic plan that would cover about 15 years or so. There's so much momentum going on in the county about tourism, so many different projects that are taking place. This will help to provide a plan for the future and also give everyone sort of a working document. This is something that the commissioners will have a copy of, local government will get a copy. Tourism-related nonprofits will have access to these facts. And actually, and I apologize, I got hit. With us today is David McDougall. Jason is back here in the back. Jason is the executive director of Camp Reer, and he also is part of the G5 Trail Collective project and has done a tremendous amount of work on that project. You'll be hearing about that. And then we've got, I just went in. I forgot your name. Eric Worthington is with us with Destinations by Design. With COVID going up and down, we just had a financial roller coaster in 2020. And because we didn't know what to expect, we stopped having those discussions with companies about the strategic plan. So occupancy tax picked up. So we started talking about how to best use those monies again. And the strategic plan was something that the board wanted to go forward with. So in November, we contracted with Eric's company, Destination by Design. And he's going to give you an overview of what the strategic planning process means, what it is. A lot of that work started in December. There's just been a lot of progress taking place, so he's going to update you with that. But before he does that, I have a few stats that I wanted to share with you guys. This is showing you what tourists have spent in McDowell County over the last 10 to 15 years. Basically, between, I think I pulled, 2005 to 2019, expenditures have doubled just about. They've gone from 30-some million dollars a year in expenditures to over $60 million in expenditures. And what that means is that the county receives additional tax funds from those tourism expenditures as well as the state. So just to give you some point of reference, again, we're fortunate that occupancy tax continues to increase. Our short-term property owners right now have just been run to death trying to claim and get their properties ready to turn back around. So it's all good news. So I'm going to give you this, and then let Eric take over.
I'll follow right behind you, Carol.
Go right ahead.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
Mr., well, Vice Chairman and Commissioners, good evening. Eric Worthington with Destination by Design. It's been a real pleasure to be working alongside McDowell Tourism and Delta Authority and get to know McDowell County a little bit better. We have had the opportunity to work in the county before. Well, we, we've done all the final flora, state trail master plans for Burke and also, so from Morganton to Lake James, the Lake James section, and also the Lake James to Marion section we did just a couple of years ago. We've had the opportunity to do the engineering design for the new trailhead that's out at Burke County Park as well. And a lot of that portfolio work, you'll have to see in the packet here. We've also had experience in the county, working on the Overmount Victory National Historic Trail. We recently did a master plan last year that connected down from Spruce Pine to Marion as well. So it's a real pleasure to be back here in the county and getting to know people at a different level as well. There's three materials that I passed out to you. One is a presentation I want to go through real quickly. Inside that presentation, I'll reference some economic impact numbers that we started to put together as part of our project. And then the third document is one in which we just showed some portfolio work. Just share. We probably worked with close to 200 jurisdictions in the last 10 years, all over the place. So there might be something in there that's of interest to you, and we're glad to maneuver this process. However, it needs to maneuver to best meet your needs. So I'll just walk real quickly through the presentation and go from there. As you see there on the title, at the bottom there, branding and capital infrastructure, there's really, we're under contract with the TDA to do two things. One is to rebrand the county and determine what the brand and messaging is going to be. As we all know, the county's changed a lot in the last 10 years. What do the people want? What do the assets say? And how can we create a really honest brand of who you are, who you all are as a community? The second part is capital infrastructure. What are the types of, we call this tourism product. What's the product that exists that we can continue to enhance that's going to attract visitors? Basically, these are the things that you all market. So we want to, and this is, this is structured the same way the TDA is structured. They receive occupancy tax revenues, and they can spend those dollars to market the county and also to invest in cap, tourism-related capital infrastructure dollars. So what we're doing here is doing two concurrent projects that meet both of those needs. Slide 1 and 2 there is just a little bit about us as a firm. We're planning, design, engineering firm. But we also have an entire communications division. We do branding, a lot of video, web, and so forth. We like to weave a lot of that work into our planning work as well. So just a little bit about us, destination marketing. I share a few previous successes, some recent projects, the town of Spindell. We've done some recent branding for them in streetscape engineering design. Boone, which is where we're based, we've done some branding. Elkin, we recently completed a brand for the town of Elkin, Blacksburg, and so forth. So just to share a little bit about that. Page 6, you'll see a branding and marketing work schedule. These are the various tasks that we are under contract with the TDA to execute on. You see that this process, really, the core of the process wraps up around July and August. You will certainly have a new visual brand, probably earlier, early in the summer. But the entire process kind of wraps up then. Then we go into kind of campaign execution, which we'll continue on for some time. But task 1 is discovery. We're in the midst of that right now. We've done a tremendous amount of research. We have a survey that's been taken by quite a few folks. In fact, some of you may have taken it. But we, we just sent that survey out to, how many folks in the business? I think 700?
We're over that. Yeah, we're probably closer to 100 or anything.
And we just sent it out to the Chamber of Commerce and their big email list as well. Task 2 there, we work towards a brand platform. What's your unique value proposition? What's your brand essence? What's, what makes you different? And something that we can hang our hat on. It's different than your kind of competition. Creative production, we get into visual identity. We produce a marketing plan. We are also, over the next four seasons, developing a variety of content that can be used to market and promote the area as well. well. And then task six is actually executing that work, serving as an agency of record to place ads and so forth for the county. Page seven, Destination McDowell is really the name of the tourism infrastructure master plan itself. The purpose of this ties into identifying your assets, identifying your partners, understanding where your gaps are. How do we really bring different partners together that maybe their tourism isn't a mission, but economic development is, or arts and culture is, or downtown revitalization is? So how do we partner up with these different entities in the county to create a tight tourism plan? We want to make the plan visual and be very strategic. We've identified a number of partners. Page eight, government, quasi-government entities, a number of nonprofit organizations as well. This list continues to grow. Page nine, you see some of the focus groups and interviews that we've been engaged with just over the beginning of this first quarter. We've had an opportunity to sit down with Ashley and Blair and others, Marion representatives. We've done some walking tours of both Marion and Old Ford and also Little Switzerland. We've had an opportunity to meet at the community forum, people on the move, Orchard at Old Pass. We've had meetings, NC Division Parks and Recreation, Frisbee Florida State Trail, et cetera. So this group continues to expand as well. Stakeholder engagement, page number 10, we are in the process of a public engagement video. That is kind of the teaser that you all saw. It's kind of the beginning of that. Probably be another minute or two added to that where we're doing some stakeholder interviews, et cetera. And the purpose of that is to drive that message out with the call to action to go to a website that we're creating where anyone in the community can take a survey that's tied to, that's going to be centered around tourism, infrastructure development and so forth. So that's really the purpose of that. We're going to advertise that on Facebook, that video, again, with that call to action to go to that website and engage. We're hoping to launch that here at the end of February. We're going to present all this material later this month to the TDA Board. Soon as they give us a thumb up, we'll be launching that material. Page 11, a quick sneak peek in terms of like where things are going based on some of our analysis thus far. We're really seeing the plan kind of dovetail into two different directions. Countywide connections, look at Piska partnerships. There's a lot of momentum happening there. You've got four state trails, state designated trails that are in the county. This is pretty unique. And then of course, the Catawba River Paddle Trail as well. These are all things that kind of span across the entire county and frankly, into the entire region as a whole as well. So how do we capitalize on those? And then of course, our main street communities. This is, these are the places where we want the tourists to come for the various assets, but we want them to drop their dollars off before they leave, right? So how do we make sure that into the future, the main street communities are continuing to advance? There's a tremendous amount of momentum happening in both of the communities. How does the TDA come in and serve as a partner alongside those communities? That's what we're trying to answer there. 12, talk real quickly about countywide connections, G5. And we put together a quick economic impact study of what does it mean for the Old Fort Trail system that's around the community and has about approximately 30 miles. 40 miles have now been designed by the International Mountain Bike Association. You're looking at a 72-mile trail system. We got really conservative in terms of our market, in terms of expenditures, et cetera. And we're, even at that conservative number, we're looking at 2.5 to 4.5 million of direct spending if this system is built out. It's already designed, it's already on the ground, it just needs funding to support that. So we see that as a significant opportunity that has a high ROI that can be returned relatively quickly. The one thing about these types of trail systems is they can be built for five to eight dollars a linear foot, whereas you get into your bigger greenways and you're looking at 100 to 150 dollars a linear foot for a paved greenway. So you can get a quick return on your investment and attract a lot of people for quite a few hours away with that big of a trail system.
Just for clarification, you're talking to G5, the 43, 44 miles there between Curtis Creek, Mill Creek and the Parkway?
That's right. An additional 42 miles have been designed and are laid out, but need funding to actually construct.
Yep.
And you see that map there on page right, I'm sorry, yeah, map on page right of page 12. But there's a lot of momentum happening with all the trails. That is just one that we've done quite a few mountain bike parks in larger trail systems and so forth. I can't emphasize enough, what you all have here is very, very unique to all of western North Carolina. And if you've ever visited Brevard on a busy Saturday, you'll see what a mountain biking destination will do. I think you all are well positioned, better positioned, particularly with the way that system has been designed and the way things have been laid out. This is a significant opportunity for the county. The next page there, I just highlight the fact that we're trying to create a very visual plan. We've got a budget inside of this particular planning endeavor where we're going to actually help with, you know, trailhead design, streetscape improvements, anything that comes along the way. And we're going to be working with the TDA Board and its partners to try to identify those things. What are the opportunities here that our engineers, our landscape architects on our team can help bring to life? So that we have, you know, not just a document that lists out your objectives and your goals, but really visually compelling and helps the TDA secure grant funding. Because that is the key here. That the TDA not spend its money, but leverage it to bring in other funds from outside sources and try to get internal partners as well to try to maximize and multiply that dollar. So that's the big picture vision of the plan itself. Lastly, on page 14, I just list out the capital infrastructure work schedule. We're heavy into the direction setting, have done a lot of those tasks. Task two, discovering analysis. We're probably at 50% through that. Public engagement, we've had dozens of focus groups and interviews already. Task four, you start to see the framework plan with the countywide connections and the main street communities. You start to see the formulation of a planned framework there. Task five, we get into the civic master planning, the visual development and so forth. We want to send us back through the community again to make sure how we've interpreted things, the direction that we've gone is indeed correct and then wrap up the document itself. So apologize if I was a little long-winded there, but that's what we're up to. It's a big project and we'll be here for quite a few months.
Eric, I seen that. You mentioned Spindale. I saw some of the stuff on Facebook and it looks great what you guys have done down there.
Thanks.
I'm excited. I wrote down your last sentence right here. One of your last sentences, visually compelling, they got to see it and they got to want to do it. And what you're putting out there is all that. You said leverage other funds to bring outside resources, to bring outside resources to maximize the dollars. And I think you got to, you're well on your way to something big here in McDowell County with what the document you're producing to the TDA Board to review.
I agree. I think that there's a tremendous amount of opportunity and we're not having to go and scratch to find projects, opportunities and partners. They're here, if one's willing, and I think the timing is right.
Your community where people work, groups work together, government works together. You've got tremendous natural resources that people can get out and enjoy from a lake to the mountains to the G5 bike trail. I mean, those bikes are 10, 15, that's a cheap bike. It's very cheap bike to buy any. You know, so Jason can speak more to that, I'm sure, but you know, we need to get people outside and get them active. And as Mr. Carol would say, that's a good place to help stop the spread of COVID by riding your bike up a mountain trail. Okay, comments, questions? Brenda, Chris, Abby? Okay. Ashley, anything you need to ask her?
I did a video a couple of weeks ago, just as part of it, and spoke about the priorities of the board and the organization. And it's something, it's been a long time coming, but they're doing a great job with it.
Carol?
I've got one thing. I don't know how much you all know about the G5 Trail Collective, but in the work that the team has done so far and the tourism things that we've done, one thing is very apparent, is that project is going to be ready to be on the ground in the next two or three years. Do we have just a couple of minutes that Jason and I can give you a break?
Yeah, Jason, come on up. Yeah, that's very important.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
If they can generate 2.5 to 4.5 million dollars of direct spending in McDowell County, we've got a couple of minutes.
Well, thanks. I'll just take a second to brag on Eric and his team at Destination by Design too. One of the reasons that we felt compelled to go with them is because of their kind of comprehensive assets that they bring to the table. So they can not only do streetscapes, they've got, you know, the bottom floor, state trail and other linear trails. And then they've also got experience building out recreational assets like the trails that we're proposing in Old Ford. So they're really a great asset to come in and just turnkey a lot of what we envisioned for the county. And so I hope that the commissioners and the community really take what they present and look at it as an even, you know, like here, all the assets, what can we invest in? What's the short-term investments that we can make that can have a large return and kind of what are the longer-term things that we can invest in? So with my TDA hat on for a second, I just wanted to brag on him. In terms of the Old Fort Trail project, where that is right now is we started out with the Forest Service partnership, looking at about 25 miles of trail, new trail in Old Ford. And based on community feedback and participation, like Eric said, that kind of went into about 42 miles, which is great. That's going to be just an incredible recreational asset for the county as a whole. But it does increase the need for some permitting and planning funds. And so that's what we're really in search of now is some of the, to do the archaeology and pottery for NEPA that's required for that trail expansion. Once that's done, we anticipate being shovel-ready in October of this year. And we believe, based on the feedback that we've gotten from other funders, that the grant dollars for the trail build are there. We just have to get the groundwork laid first. So we're beginning that NEPA contracting now. And so we would be greatly appreciative of any support that the county could help us with. Because once that's done, it really pays the way for that 42 miles to be constructed. So we're on track and it's, you know, it's a great project that could have huge returns to the county. So thanks for giving me a couple of minutes.
Just for clarification, the planning aspect, you're needing some help with funding, but actually physically, building the trail, you feel can get grant money for that?
Yeah, it's a lot easier to get grant funds to move dirt and build that infrastructure just because of the way, you know, those funders work. So it's a lot harder to come by the NEPA funds. So we were able to secure a $75,000 grant from people on the move in Old Ford, which is the Black Lake Collaborative in Old Ford. So they see kind of the investment that the trail infrastructure is going to bring to the communities in Old Ford. But given the expansion of trail miles, there's a broader scope in NEPA. So that's what we're looking for those funds for now.
And those estimated funds are approximately what?
About 50,000 is the shortfall based on the additional trail miles.
And when do you need to hear about that money?
It's being contracted now. So we're in the process of trying to raise those additional funds. So the sooner, sooner the better. But yeah, we're in the process of contracting it now.
Jason, have you presented to, or Carol, somebody, the need for these funds to City Council and also to the Alderman yet?
We're on, we were going to be on their agenda, but it conflicted with your meeting tonight. And as fate would have it, they had some internal problems. They're not meeting tonight. So we're hoping to do that and un-hack this week. So yes, to answer your question, we will be going to Old Ford. And part of this project, as Eric has laid out, there are partnerships for funding. Like this project is a good partnership opportunity. TDA can't fund everything, but we can be a good financial partner. So if this was something, you know, that we could do together with the town of Old Ford, with the G5 Trail Collective, with TDA funds and county funds and make this happen, as Jason said, they're going to be shovel-ready really quickly. And if you think about how easy it is to get to Curtis Creek and with all the additional parking that's going to provide, all the different levels of hikers and bikers that are going to have that opportunity to visit here, we're going to see a huge, huge change in that outdoor community, I think.
And I'm sorry to speak off the top of my head, but with the trail itself being 42 miles, eight dollars or so, that's going to be around 1.5 million?
You're looking at 1.5 to 2.
And that is grant money that's going to be taken care of and the issue that you're asking for is planning money of approximately 50,000 dollars.
Yeah, we anticipate grant funds being used for the actual build. And so the NEPA just lays the groundwork for the permitting. So that's kind of where we are now. But yeah, and then once that NEPA is done, it's, you know, it doesn't expire. So the Forest Service can just, you know, put that on the shelf and we never have to do it again. So once it's done, it's done. But yeah, but we wouldn't ask the county for the build funds, but we would use the county funds as leverage. So when we go to a grant tour, it helps to see, you know, nonprofit, federal, town, county.
Jason, once a month, we have a utility meeting with the city and actually, we need to put this on the agenda to bring up to them. And because I think that that would benefit them tremendously too because of the restaurants and the city limits and other amenities they have. So let's put that on our agenda to bring that up and broach that with them when we meet again.
And Mr. Carlton attends that meeting for the town. Has this been presented to TDA for requests on any funding or, since I know the town wasn't yet because of tonight?
Yeah, it will be. Yeah, it's on the agenda. The other thing to keep in mind too with Eric's numbers is he's using a 90 mile radius. And like you said, I want to emphasize how conservative that is. You know, that's not including Greensboro, Raleigh, much of Charlotte, Atlanta. I mean, you know, so we're, those numbers are 2.5 to 4.5 in direct consumer spending is conservative, way conservative.
Okay, great. Well, this is very exciting and the board looks forward to have continued discussions moving forward.
Yeah, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol, thanks Eric. Thanks so much for being here tonight and presenting.
So you'll be in touch with us about that during meetings where we can do a presentation?
No, you just go ahead and schedule to be on the agenda. It's not a full board, it's just like a committee meeting once a month. And so we'll bring that up at our committee meeting with them. If you can just go ahead and get on there and schedule, present what y'all have done tonight. I think that they'll be very excited to hear what you just presented here tonight too.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, let's move to the first item under our old business and that will be the Universal Property Development Grant Update. Mr. Wick, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. This is information and action. So a quick bit of information, we've talked maybe about two or three years about Appalachian Regional Commission funding for some roads that we are planning to build on the south side of College Drive leading to this building. Our engineer had noted, this funding that we have in hand is a little short of the estimated cost. So we have asked ARC for a little over $300,000 for the balance of what the estimate actually is. And we've received positive feedback so far. So fingers crossed on that with the goal of going to bid in the spring. So that's still outstanding as far as that additional funding, but again, fingers crossed. The other item, we've talked about, maybe going back to October or before, this is a Golden Leaf Foundation grant. We submitted a pre-application back in the fall. It was a little over a million dollars. They wrote back and invited us to apply for a full grant, full application at a lower amount at 750,000. So Mr. Abernathy and his staff worked on the application these last few months. And you have, I believe, some summary information there. There's no There's no county match, but we would ask that you allow us to apply for that funding to do further development of the property.
Okay. Comments, questions by board members? Okay, they hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay, second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose like sign. Okay? Thank you. Let's move to item B under old business. This is the public shooting range update. Mr. Wood, go right ahead, sir.
Very brief update. Just wanted to put in your, in front of your eyes, a drawing of what the proposed office building looks like, the public facility. This is based on design by Mr. Chuck Hamrick, and so this is still pending, but he has proposed a brick facade on it for maintenance and so forth. But this is a design that NC Wildlife had on hand. So this has not been bid yet, but should be bid pending any changes in the next month or so. But the project is still continuing, and if you'd like to go out and see any of the grading, just let us know, we'll get a heads up to the contractor, so they don't call the sheriff's office on you. But things still seem to be going okay with it, so.
And what's the approval?
Hopefully, if everything goes okay with approvals at the NC Wildlife level, hopefully within the next month, because we needed to be bid and moved to the front of the line as far as construction as soon as possible.
And the graders, the grade company settles is doing outstanding job. That road looks good going in.
They've done a fantastic job this year.
Okay, let's move to the next item on our form schedule. This is the North Main Street Building Update, item C. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. This is the former Kirksey Building. Couple of weeks ago, you had a presentation for Mr. Hamrick, the county's architect, presented a kind of a rough draft of a floor plan for that building. You've had opportunity to look at it and offer some comments. So as I've mentioned to you before, after tonight's hopeful action of approving it to move forward, there's still opportunity to say, oh, my gosh, I forgot about this, this, or whatever. We've not started swinging hammers yet, so up until the time that the ribbon is cut, maybe not that late, but there's an opportunity to voice opinions, questions, or whatever, so don't worry about that. But we would ask that you approve some move forward with plans, and then we would bring the plans back to you just to make sure, and then we would proceed with bidding at that point.
Okay, comments or questions?
I'd like to accept them as presented.
Okay, got a motion to accept. Second discussion. One good thing, this project will be fully paid for out of dedicated revenues, so if I hear, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose like sign.
And with that, that's going to be, he said it's going to take about three months to get the drawings together before it goes to bid?
That's right. So it'll take some time. There's a lot of detail there.
Okay, great. Mr. Wood, let's move to item D, Commissioners, University Services Building Update.
Yes, sir. Sent out some pictures. You don't have those in your packet, but sent those out. A great photographer took a couple of days ago, Mr. Keller, Station 4. And so that building is very close to completion, just down to the punch list items. And it's not been furnished as of yet, of course, but anticipated to be in operation next month. And again, Mr. Keller's here if you have any questions about operation, but contractor, architect, everyone's done a great job to get it to where it is so far.
Actually, I sneak peeked that building Friday, and that thing looks good. That building's going to serve the purpose for the needs of Mid-Elk County for what, 40, 50 years, Wood?
Yes, sir.
You excited?
Absolutely.
Four base, the goal's been a four-base setup, I guess since inception of our EMS services. And we're about to see it come to pass within another year to get our other building completed. It's great. It's all about improving patient outcome and response time. Okay, that's right. Let's go to item A under new business. This will be the 2022 budget schedule. Mr. Wood, go lead us out, and then Patrick, Mr. Ellis has got, so comment the mic on that, too.
Sure. Ms. Bell is still here, probably just in case there's questions on this item. It's hard to believe, but we're at budget time already. Seems like it was just yesterday we were working on it and presenting in this room. You've got a copy of the budget schedule in your packet, it looks like it's on page 54. And this is subject to change, of course, of weather, or, you know, it's not necessarily set in stone, except for when the hearing needs to be for approval and the adoption of the budget, and a few other things. Most of the rest of it is somewhat flexible, but for the most part, for the month of March, I will be meeting with department heads. Probably will do Zoom mostly this year just to be safe and not get or catch anything from anybody. But more or less, it'll be pretty much the same. You know, I will meet with department heads, and we go over their, the needs and requests for their departments. And most years, it's been pretty much the same for each year. You talk about how, you know, the current year is going, anticipated needs for the next year, talk a little bit about some longer-term goals for that department, and then we, you know, go over the actual numbers, and then we kind of move on. This year, we're going to focus more on longer-term goals. So yes, we need to know what you were, you're asking for next year. So we got to know that, we got to plug those numbers in and have a balanced budget to present to y'all in May. But we've always had sort of a, okay, do you anticipate doing a new service, or needing to add a new staff person, or whatever? Just a little bit of a teaser perhaps for future years. Really going to double down on that this year to get people a little more, okay, a little more specific than just on their goals. One of the things we're also going to do, we wanted to do for a while last year, we just shelved a lot of anything new, is capital planning. And so that means from carpet to roofs to parking lots to buildings, you know, as a department head, they have to advocate for their departments. You know, I may do it on their behalf and say, hey, don't you need so-and-so or whatever, but they, that's their job to say, you know, we really need more vehicles, we're on three wheels here, or I've got a bucket under, you know, ceiling that's leaking, those sorts of, hopefully that's not happening in reality, but that's their job to advocate, not just once a year in the budget process, you know, 365 days a year, but specifically, definitely in that process, say, hey, this is my opportunity, I have a captive audience, I'm going to push for these things, and say, these are our needs. And sometimes you get wants, and that's okay, too. So we're going to double down again on the capital forecasting. So I'm not hearing in the middle of the year, oh, I forgot to mention this, well, I really could have used that, which happens sometimes, and you, as a board, aren't hearing from me, you know, we really should have budgeted for this, but we didn't. Again, we've been doing capital planning in one way or another for as long as Allison or myself have been here, but it's not been as overt. We budget every year to buy new ambulance, we budget to buy at least three sheriff's office cars every year, but we're going to be a little more deliberate in how we share this information and present it than just, you know, in practice. So we're excited about enhancing our process, and we're going to share a little more detail with department heads tomorrow on what to look forward to. So it'll be a different year, obviously with COVID still going on, but we're, it'll be a good process, and look forward to presenting a nice balanced budget to y'all in a couple of months. But that's our process. Y'all's process on how y'all want to do things could be if y'all want to do things different than what's on the schedule, or in addition to, that's A-OK with us, too. But we have to get going with department heads, but if y'all want to do things differently, that's priority of the board, too.
Okay, Mr. Ellis?
Just to kind of get y'all up to speed, we're going on Ask Ashley for the strategic plan and capital improvement plan for the county, and I've been talking about the strategic plan, what he's talking about, maybe having a three, five, and 10-year estimated plan, and that is a strategic plan for us to give us ideas of what roofs need to be replaced, HVAC, carpet, and stuff like this, what he's talking about. And then the capital improvement plan, long-term, a 10-year minimum, so that we have a better understanding of where money's going to be required of us in what year, for and exactly. Just came off the school board, and I'm county commissioner, I do know that there might be a school or two that we need to either upfit or build. So that's up to the current school board, but, you know, within the next so many years, if the school board is pushing for that to work with Ashley, so that he can kind of fill us in on what we're needing to do, so that if we need to start planning now to save four monies 10 years down the road, that's going to happen. And I do appreciate Ashley working on, on what he's, what he's working on, him and Allison. So with that, it's going to be a work in progress, and so that we'll kind of have a better understanding of what's going to be outlaid each year for roofs and HVAC and carpet and all that stuff. And it's going back down to the department heads, and I think that's excellent, and I do appreciate both of you doing that. So that's all I've got to say.
Okay, great. Other comments, questions? Okay, they're being done. That's duly noted by Mr. Wood, so we appreciate that. Let's move to our next item on our schedule under new business. That would be the delinquent tax listing, item B. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir. Lead us out.
Thank you. Typically, Ms. Anya Frey would be here to present this information. I told her I would handle it for her tonight, and she was very grateful, and so she's probably doing all kinds of other wonderful things. This is the literal delinquent list, so I'll pass it on to the board if you'd like to look at it, to make that available digitally as well. She is required to present to you the unpaid taxes for the current year, and so it's a pretty thick book, and we did make sure there were no county commissioners listed. And so the balance as of, that's through January 1st, was $1,729,674.21. She's pretty close to where she was last year, a little off from last year's percentage, but still doing a great job considering all that's going on. So we'd ask that you maybe approve that receipt of that listing, first item.
Okay, what's with the board? Our comments, questions, first? All right, what's with it?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve, you have second?
Second.
Discussion? And one important fact is that the delinquent taxpayer pays for that, and when they pay the bill, that's, the cost per name is collected back, correct?
That's right. So I wasn't clear, she's got great instructions, I didn't read it all. So there is an advertisement that would more or less be that same list. Folks do have an opportunity to pay to not be in the newspaper, but in case that doesn't happen, we would ask that you approve the listing of that, whatever's remaining on the list in the McDowell News. The budgeted amount was a little over 40, was $4,700. The quote was $4,649.40. And again, that is tacked on to what's owed, and so we would ask that you approve that to be published on March 17th.
Okay. That's what we made a motion for.
Yeah, we got a motion forward. You got that in the queue, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose like sign. Okay, let's move to item C. This would be administrative items. Mr. Wood, go ahead and lead us out, sir.
Yes, sir. These are a few housekeeping items we'd like to get handled. The first is our water supply plan for the county. This is for the NEPA water system, and there's a resolution attached we'd ask you to approve.
Okay, what's with the board?
Approve resolution.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose like sign.
Okay, the next item is related to cardiac monitors for EMS. We had held out some hope. These are pretty expensive, and so staff had applied for several grants to help pay for those. We were unsuccessful, but we tried. So we would ask that we do financing, and so you have a resolution on page 69, or amendment page 69, to finance those for a period of four years, total amount of $206,222.31 at a rate of 1.28% with Truist Bank, and you see the quotes there. So we'd ask that you approve that resolution.
Okay.
For, for?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose like sign. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. You have two NEPA water system leak adjustments and the attached memos for those.
Okay, comments, questions? Okay, what's with the board?
My question would be about that.
Okay, got a motion, you have seconds. Second discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose like sign.
Okay, and then closing out this item, you have budget amendments GF 28 through 35, CP2, NAMAL1F1, and SI1. Be glad to answer any questions, as would Ms. Bell, please.
Okay, are there comments, questions? They're being, then what's with the board?
We need to accept that as presented, too?
Mm-hmm.
So moved.
Okay, got a motion, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose like sign.
That's all admin items.
Okay, let's go to item D, tax matters. Mr. Wood, lead us out, sir.
These are routine releases, rebills, refunds, and as well as discoveries.
Okay, comments, questions about any specific one listed? They're being, then what's with the board?
Accept that as presented.
Okay, motion to accept?
Second.
Second by Chris Ravone, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose like sign. Okay, let's go to item E, board appointments. Mr. Wood, lead us out, sir.
You have an item, one item there, this is sort of like a Soviet election, I guess. The Regency Workforce Board, Dr. Gossett, with him resigning and moving, they need a new, new member there for representing the college president, and so they would ask that Dr. Merritt be placed in that position.
Okay, what's with the board?
So moved.
Motion to second by Chris Ravone, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose like sign. Okay, let's go to item F, Duke Energy Easement. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Received this a month or two ago. This is a request to run a power line across county property off Highway 126 in NEPA. It's the old Hendrix farm, for those that have been on the board a while. I honestly first told them we might have an issue with it as it was originally presented, and so I did note to them, you see a right-of-way on page 99, a pre-existing right-of-way, and so ask if they could run it in that right-of-way that we'd sold to the neighbor a couple of years ago, and they said, yes, that would be possible. So we would ask that you approve the easement for our neighbor.
Okay, what's with the board?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, you have second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose like sign. Item G under new business, this is a Saddle and Bridle Club lease. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. This is for the property on 226 South. The Saddle and Bridle Club has leased that property from the county for many decades. Their lease expires at the end of February, and if, it's one of those things, we wanted to make sure you concur with it before we- advertise it and put it up in the paper and all that. So if you concur with the renewal, we'll advertise it properly and have that formally before you the next meeting. That's okay.
Okay, what's with the board?
My question was first.
Okay, got a motion to approve. Second by Mr. Ellis. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, you opposed last time. Okay. Next item on our agenda for tonight's meeting is system comment. Madam Clark, do we have anybody present who wishes to speak?
Not today.
Okay, let's move to the next item Commissioners Staff and Staff Reports. Ashley, the New York Chair of ELD and or Commissioners.
Just a quick comment. We are testing Zoom for, so having a live feed for the meeting. We did a little bit of a test tonight with some folks that, some staff that could watch it. But our goal is to have that in place next month. So we're working on that as you directed previously.
And and our IT guy, Rayburn, he's involved in that heavily, I'm sure.
He is. He and Tyler have have worked on that. So they'll make sure we're up and running full speed next month.
You do. All right. Do I hear a motion adjourned?
Well, there is one other thing. In Egg McDowell, there is, you know, they did a survey one time, but it only included McDowell County. The state has a survey out now that's publicized. But it, they said they're getting a very low turnout. So if some way we could make sure that the public knows there's another one, a survey out there, and this could help us get, you know, some infrastructure laid. So if we could somewhere get that out to
We'll promote it.
I don't know the schools how we need to do that to help with that survey, because it is a different survey. It's not the old survey. It's a brand new survey, and it's public about, they're publicized by the state.
Okay.
Not by just connect McDowell.
We'll make sure it's now.
Excellent. And add that to our meeting with the city, too. We can get that information to them so they can help get the word out, too.
That's right.
Okay, great. Thanks, Rick. All right, any other comments, questions? Communications by staff and or Commissioners. They're being then. Do I hear a motion adjourned? A motion adjourned by Commissioner Ellis?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Allison. All in favor say aye. Aye, you opposed last time. Meeting is adjourned.